If you're here to speak on an item and are not the applicant, please fill out one of these speaking forms and give it to Thad or Jared down here. When the item is heard, you will be called to come to the podium. Please come up, give your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. If you're here to speak on an item with a large group of people, we encourage you to elect a representative to share the group's concerns, and if necessary, some additional time will be given to that person. Where several speakers are being heard on the same item, please do your best to limit your comments to concerns that we haven't heard yet. We reserve the right to limit extensive and repetitious comments. Please direct all your comments or questions to the commission. If necessary, we'll ask staff or the applicant to respond to those. And lastly, we appreciate everyone's efforts to get here today and the time taken away from work and other obligations, and that we just ask for your assistance in upholding the decorum of the meeting. So with that, we'll move to our first item, which is receipt of the minutes. Do I have a motion to receive the minutes of the December 12th, 2024 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approve minutes.
The motion to receive the minutes. All right, we have that up. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. The minutes are approved. Next item is continuance requests and uncontested requests.
Item 21, PUD 2043, request to defer to January 23rd. Item 22, case SP591, defer to January 23rd. Item 23, SPOD 1666, defer to January 23rd. Item 24, SPOD 1673, defer to January 23rd. Item 25, SPOD 1694, defer to January 23rd. And item 26, case PC10956, defer to February 13th.
All right. Do we have anyone here to speak on any of those items? Seen none, I just need a motion.
A move to defer items as read.
A motion to defer the uncontested requests is read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Those items are approved. We now have new requests.
Item 11, case PUD 2045, defer to January 23rd. Item 12, case PUD 2046, request to defer to January 23rd. Item 17, SPOD 1687, defer to February 13th. Item 18, case SPOD 1697, defer to February 13th. And item 19, case SPOD 1685, defer to January 23rd.
I do have someone signed up that wanted to speak on item 18, Mr. Daniel Ray. This item is being deferred. If you'd like, because I know you made a special trip down here today, if you have anything that you'd like to say on it, or you can reserve that for the 13th of February.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I just need a motion on the new continuance requests.
I will move to continue each new request as read.
A motion to approve the new requests. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And those items are approved. That brings us to the consent docket.
Item 1 is KC7705, final plat of villas at Cavalo is revised, and this is located south of southwest 44th Street and east of South Mustang Road.
All right. Is anyone here to speak on this item? All right, seen none, I just need a motion.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
All right. Mr. Privet motions approve the consent docket. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the consent docket is approved. We now are at items for individual consideration, and we start with item 2.
This is PUD 1748-SP02, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1748, located at 13905 and 13909 Southwestern Avenue.
Good afternoon, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is, I believe, the second specific plan application. Jared, if you could go to the aerial, please. This is part of the Palermo Place development. This will be the last series of buildings and what's create an office park along Southwestern Avenue. It does conform to the PUD, staffs recommended approval. In talking with Commissioner Newman, he did notice that, I believe, plain review, maybe you've missed the lack of a dumpster enclosure on the dumpster that was already there, so we can add a requirement as part of this, that the dumpster be required to have an enclosure.
Did we have anyone signed up?
No.
Okay. I did review the application and visited the site, and as David indicated, dumpster enclosure is not there. Other than that, I didn't have any issues with it, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve with one TE. TE1 being that the missing dumpster enclosure be added as part of the construction of this phase.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Newman, subject to the technical evaluation is read into the record. Also note that, for the record, that staff's review of the specific plan for the development indicates the proposal is consistent with PUD 1748 master design statement and the master development plan. Item's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes, please.
I don't ever get to do that.
And that item is approved.
Thank you.
Item 3.
This is KC767706, final plat of Piedmont Intermediate on Memorial, located south of West Memorial Road and west of North Morgan Road.
Hi, Patrick Altondorf with Wallace Design Collective, 410 North Walnut Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The project site is located just west of the Stone Ridge Elementary School, between Memorial Road and Northwest 134th Street. Our application is to pot the property. It's required as part of the PUD, and our current use, our proposed use, is allowed within the PUD. Our project includes a new intermediate school, which will be for 5th and 6th grade. That will serve Piedmont Public Schools. We did review the agenda and are aware of the concerns of Mr. Robert Adams, and so our planning staff did reach out to him and spoke to him about his concerns, and I'll kind of go through a few of the information that we passed along to him, but we are actively working with him and do plan on setting up another meeting with him after this meeting to go over the project plans for the project. So with Mr. Adams, we talked about the drainage, so we will be providing detention and meeting all the city ordinances for drainage. There were also some concerns about children and the safety and potentially coming onto the property where there's existing water, standing water. No students will be unattended. The playground area will be fenced, and so we don't have a concern that they would be off the property. We also have some landscape buffer and a detention facility that would be between the playground area and Mr. Robert's property. Additionally, we have, there were some concerns about traffic. There will be staggered start times for the schools to alleviate any concerns on additional traffic on Memorial Road. And for turning around, there will be a drive, so if you're looking at the map, we do have a drive near the dead end of Memorial Road, that if somebody does drive past the school or turn into the dead end inadvertently, they will be able to turn around or proceed through the school drive without using the area that they're using right now. And from our team, we also have the school superintendent here, if there's any operational questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is Ward 1, and Patrick, I appreciate you acknowledging and engaging Mr. Adams because I read his concerns as well, but as this is a preliminary plat, wasn't able to discuss it with him, so I appreciate you getting with him and with further explanation and addressing some of those items. I don't have any questions or concerns. Do any other commissioners? No, I think we're just ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. A motion to approve item C7706, subject to the technical evaluations.
Yes.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. And that item is approved. Thank you. Item 4.
This is SPOD 1669, application to rezone 1 Northwest 102nd Street from O2 to SPOD 1669.
David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an SPD that would be with an O2 base, but to modify some of the bulk regs. If you're aware, in this area, this has been dominated recently by a lot of medical complexes, notably McBride up and down the Broadway Extension. There have been a series of vacation actions to close streets to make these superblocks with these large medical facilities. There is the one TE, we cannot agree to that, the reason being the 25-foot setback would push us into the floodplain and some floodway. So what we are seeking through the SPUD is a 10-foot setback on the east. What we would propose as an alternative is a TE that reads portions of the building within the 25-foot setback will have a maximum height of 15 feet as measured at the adjacent property line. So we will be within that, what staff's asking for 25 feet, it'll be a 10-foot, but within the 25 feet, we will have a max height of 15 feet as measured from the adjacent property Happy to answer any questions.
All right, this is Commissioner Pennington Ward, and he is not here. Commissioner La Forge, you want to?
Yeah, sorry, nobody's.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I'll just ask if staff was good with the technical evaluation as read in by the applicant? Or any concerns over that, I should say?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department, that's fine if the commission agrees. Our concern, I think, was also that you're, do you intend to have a west setback of 25 feet, Mr. Box?
I believe that's what the, yes.
Okay. That was greater than what would normally be required in the O2 district, so, but yeah, regarding the east setback, 10 feet, as long as the height is limited, I think that would be fine.
The problem is the west. I think that's where the floodplain exists, or what we're trying to do is hug it closer to the east, which is why we need to modify.
Oh, okay, I understand. You're pushing everything, you're shifting everything eastward.
Correct.
I got you.
So we'll maintain that 10-foot setback, but a max height of 15 feet.
So my concern is, you say you don't have room. Well, no, the flood zone just means you have less to build on, but to still honor 25 feet from the east neighbor.
We've requested as part of the SPUD, it's a 10-foot setback.
Right. 25 foot would be better for the neighbor to the east, though, but they're not here and have not contacted and expressed concern, is that right?
Correct. And if you were to be on 102nd Street and look to the south, you would see several multi-story office buildings as part of the McBride facility. So a 15-foot building is perhaps the lowest in scale that exists in that area.
Okay.
I guess my question is, what's more important to us, that 25-foot setback, or that what's indicated on the site plan as parking is out of the flood zone? I really don't have an issue with a portion of parking being in the flood zone. I don't know if Public Works has an opinion on that, but...
I think the amount of work that it would take to remove that out of the floodplain would be the problem.
So it's floodplain?
Floodway, floodplain, either of them. I think, I think that is the issue.
Very large, Public Works. So I haven't looked at it close enough to see if the floodplain and the flood zone and the floodway line are the same, and that would be the question. If it's just in the 100-year mapped flood zone, then they could go through a LOMERF process, which is fairly short timeframe to get that approved. If it is indeed floodzone, floodway are the same, then city ordinance does not allow construction within, of any kind, within the floodway. And so to go through that, they would have to go through a letter of map revision process, conditional letter of map revision, go through that whole deal. They're probably looking at, just in rough numbers, a year to get that approved through FEMA, but that would be the conditions. We could, if it's just floodzone, then it would be a fairly short process, otherwise it's going to be really lengthy.
Additionally, I don't know that it, I mean, typically, what we'll see from staff is comprehensive plan policies that discourage filling in the floodplain, so.
That's where my confusion is, and I don't know if it's floodplain, floodzone. I have an exhibit that says floodzone.
A floodway, yeah, well, I think the difference is...
Floodway is a no-go, but floodplain, you can do it, but it's discouraged because it requires fill within the floodplain, which alters the floodplain. So again, if you look at the area...
The thing that we would need to see on that, really, to make a firm determination, is the map that shows the floodplain and the floodway. There's a lot of areas around the city where those two lines coincide. A lot of times, they don't, sometimes they do, and if this happens to be one of those, then the conditions to encroach on one or the other of those seriously impacts the way the project would be done.
Regardless of that, though, what we're proposing is a 10-foot setback and a 15-foot max height. If somebody were going to build a single-family residence there, you could go up to 35 feet. So we're proposing a building that's 20 feet less than what even R1 would allow. So the real question is, is 10-foot setback with a 15-foot max height compatible in an area dominated by large office buildings?
When you say it could be 30-foot high, what would the setback need to be, though?
Well, side yard setback in R1 is 5 foot.
Okay, but this is office, my point is, when property owners go and buy floodzone, and then they complain, "Oh, I don't have enough room to build here, so I need to be unnecessarily close to my neighbors." No, you buy some floodzone, that portion is not buildable, and so you have a smaller footprint, and you still need to have an appropriate setback from your neighbors.
So the question is, is 10-foot an appropriate setback, given the limiting height language we have? And it's not that we're complaining about it, the city's policies exist to not develop in the floodplain.
Does Box give any contact with the county?
No, there's been no written protest, no emails, no calls, no questions. I don't know if anyone actually lives there. The property to the south is vacant, has for sale signs. This entire area, at one point, had a series of homes that have, most of them, gone away for large-scale office developments.
Do you have a BFE?
A what?
Base flood elevation.
This is a zoning case. This is a PUD.
Well, I know, but you're going to have to build to it anyways, I mean, for FEMA and being that close to it. Are you in zone AEX, what?
Well, what we're proposing is to stay out of all of it.
Yeah, okay, then you don't have, yeah, then it doesn't matter.
Okay, since the neighbor didn't reach out and hasn't complained, I do worry that they didn't have the opportunity, but they did, so I'll make a motion to approve with the TE as amended, the amended request by the applicant.
A motion to recommend approval of SPOD 1669, City Council, subject to the technical evaluation is read in by the applicant. Been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item is recommended for approval. Item 5.
This is SPOD 1696, application to rezone 4516 Grant Boulevard from PUD 1813, or PUD 813.
Hello, Patrick Altondorf with Wallace Design Collective, 410 North Walnut Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This application is for rezoning east of the Kilpatrick Turnpike and Route 66, off Grant Road. The user, healthcare user to the south, there's a building there that's gray, just to the south of the subject property. That particular healthcare provider would like to build a new building just north of their current building, and the current PUD has a maximum building height of 50 feet for two stories, and so our SPUD for rezoning revises that to three stories. So the building height does not change, it is still a maximum of 50 feet, but it is revised to allow three stories for the structure. The remaining part of the SPUD matches the PUD with the same uses, and it has been updated to the current city minimum requirements for the SPUD, but the only major change is the revision from allowing two stories to three.
Thank you. This is Ward 1. We were supposed to meet this morning, but the applicant had to catch a flight. Thanks for standing in, Patrick. I don't have any concerns over this, I think it's very straightforward, it's, as Patrick mentioned, simple fix to reword that from two stories to three, and I think this is, I think, healthcare development in this, right off the Kilpatrick. It's a great development for this area, so it's Ward 1, I can't make a motion, but I'm in support of the application. Any other questions, comments? Okay, just need a motion.
I knew that wouldn't hurt me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of SPOD 1696.
A motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend City Council approval of SPOD 1696. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. That item is recommended for approval. Thank you. Item 6.
This is SPOD 1698, application to rezon 3331 Southwest 104th Street from SPOD 1652 and AE1.
Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th. This is an SPD that you might, it might look familiar, a previous applicant came in and rezoned it, I think just a few months ago, for an operation that I believe is called Breaks Plus. However, that SPD specifically prohibits access onto 104th. When they went to start designing the site, they approached the entity that controls both the east and west access points and were denied. Those are private streets, there's nothing we can do. In order to develop the site, we must have access onto 104th. So what we seek to do through this SPOD is to allow access onto 104th. In talking to Commissioner Newman, he did ask that we remove the restaurant uses from the SPOD, which we agreed to do. So we agreed to TE1, we would add TE2, which would eliminate use units 8300.4, 8300.35, 8300.37, and 8300.38, those being the four restaurant uses.
Commissioner Newman, anything else to add?
It's fairly straightforward, I mean, they just can't get access from the adjacent property owner, so the only access point that they do have would be off of 104th. It's not my favorite place to have another curb cut, but I really don't see any other options, so. Did we have anyone signed up on this?
No.
Okay. Any of the other commissioners have comments?
I'm not sure why we granted this with no access, or no, you know, exclusive access or something, besides having to...
I think this was a case where, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but...
I remember the case, kind of.
It was approved as a large development, and somebody somewhere along the line didn't grant access to this before they parceled it off, is...
And when I reviewed that, I specifically asked them if they had a cross-access agreement the first time, and they said yes, which apparently they did not, so.
It was a failure on the master developer part, I believe.
Which Walmart hired, probably.
Probably. Unless anyone else has an objection, I would like to recommend approval, including TE1 and TE2 as read into the record.
All right, I have a motion to recommend approval of the item, City Council, subject to TE1 and the new TE2 read into the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval. Items 7.
This is case VP-5, application to vacate a portion of the final plat of South Portland Commercial Park, located north of Southwest 104th Street and west of South May Avenue.
Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street. This is the companion item, the plat specifically has limits of no access, and so we need to partially vacate the portion prohibiting access to allow us to move forward.
Commissioner Newman, anything?
No, I mean, basically, it goes hand-in-hand with the SPOD we just approved, so, unless someone has an objection, I'd like to recommend approval of this item.
We are the final authority, so it's just approval.
Yes, we're...
Oh, I'm sorry, it does go to council. No, 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 I was wrong.
Okay. Well, I'd like to recommend approval, then, to council.
All right. A motion to recommend approval, City Council, VP-5, it's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item 8.
Item 8 is CE1134, application to close a portion of the plat at Grand Boulevard Rightofway, east of North Kelly Avenue and north of East I-44 Service Road.
Hello, Patrick Altondorf, Wallace Design Collective, 410 North Walnut Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This project is located between northeast 63rd Street and east I-44 Service Road. The application is for right-ofway closure that runs along the Service Road. The current right-ofway was dedicated as part of a plat for the old alignment of Grand Boulevard in the early 1900s. The current alignment of the Service Road does not match that right-ofway, and so there's a large right-ofway width that abuts the Service Road. The right-ofway is owned by Oklahoma City, but it is controlled by ODOT. We've performed the round robin process and received their approval for this right-ofway vacation prior to submitting this application. The right-ofway will be reduced to be consistent with the current right-ofway width for that particular roadway, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
The right-ofway will be reduced for the, to the Service Road, the appropriate right-ofway for the Service Road?
Yes.
Okay. All right. This is Ward 7, Commissioner Pennington's Ward, he's not here. Any comments, questions?
Well, is this, is this giving the property owner something, or is the property owner giving something up here and just correcting, just...
It's actually giving, it's giving... It's actually giving, it's giving, it's giving the property owner that R1 property in the north more developable area.
It is.
Now, I don't know who the, is that property owner the city? They don't own that section to the north.
No. So it's a, it's a private owner. And we have met with Commissioner Pennington and this week, earlier this week, to debrief him on the project. So he is aware of this project and the different requirements for it.
And this is just closing. It is not transfer title.
Oh, okay.
Or just closing.
They already own the property, but right now there's a right-of-way from a long time ago.
Yes. So Grand Boulevard, as part of the plat, was aligned in that area and subsequently has been rerouted and realigned. And just the right-of-way hasn't been updated accordingly with the current highway alignment along with the Service Road.
Yeah, let's see. If anybody else has any questions, otherwise staff recommend approval. Sounds good. Okay. I'll recommend approval.
All right, we have a motion.
No one signed up to speak, right?
No, no one signed up to speak. A motion from Commissioner La Forge. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval. Item nine.
Item nine is PUD 2049, application to rezone 11301 North County Line Road from R1.
Once again, David Box 525 Northwest 11th Street. This is a PUD that would allow for a single-family residential in kind of, in keeping with what you see north. All those who jumped on a Zoom with me today, if you look at this area, going back to 2015, it was all undeveloped. Now, almost everything from this site to the north going all the way to the Turnpike is either fully developed or in the process of being developed in a similar manner to this. There is one TE that we agree to. Happy to answer any questions.
Did you have any, this is Ward one. Did you have any conversations with neighbors?
No, there's one, there is one email, but the email, when you read it, it, the, the theme of the email is a concern about displaced wildlife. This is an area that is rapidly developed in Oklahoma City. The wildlife that exists has, I guess, has presumably been displaced miles to the north and it just continues to happen. But this is fairly common in areas that are formerly farmland and now developing single-family.
Yeah, I received a, a letter from Brent Whiting, just to note a couple of things. It is, the, the wildlife issue is unfortunate, but I don't see development out here slowing down anytime soon. So it's going to be an issue for, for years to come. Another comment was that, you know, they prefer to see a mixed use or commercial development on this tract, which just does not make sense in its location, mid-block. I could see it on the, on the hard corner of Hefner and County Line, but not kind of mid arterial, midsection. So I, I think this is a great location for residential development, and the commercial needs to be isolated to the, to the arterial intersection. So I'm in support of the application. Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
I have a quick one. On the TE, it speaks to stub streets northwest and south, but on the, on the design, I don't see anything south.
On the what?
Northwest and south. And on this, on the plat layout, there's no stub street on the south.
So the, the plat is preliminary. We're, we're going to agree to that, and then you'll get when we bring the final.
Perimary?
What's that?
Did you say perimary?
Preliminary?
Preliminary. Okay.
All right. I think we're just ready for a motion then.
Make the motion to approve, subject to the one technical evaluation.
A motion to recommend approval of item PUD 2049, City Council, subject to the technical evaluation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item passes. Recommended for approval. Item 10.
This is case C 7707, preliminary plat of Whispering Bend, revised with variance, with a variance. It's located north of West Hefner Road and west of North County Line Road.
David Box 525 Northwest 11th. This is the plat that accompanies the zoning case we just heard. There are eight TEs, all of which we agree to.
Does it include the one that addresses Jeremy? He's coming in a moment ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it hasn't been revised, but you'll see it at the final. Whatever, whatever final phase touches that, you'll see it.
TE2 is a street sub, should be added to the property to the south.
Got it.
So I think we're just ready for a motion. Any of the other commissioners have anything?
Jeremy, Mike, anything? No, not on that. I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all of the technical evaluations.
A motion to approve item C 7707, subject to technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that is approved. Item 11 has been continued. Item 12 has been continued. Item 13.
This is PUD 2048, application to rezone 3031 Northwest 150th Street from PUD 1726, PUD 678, and CUP 36.
Once again, David Box 525 Northwest 11th. This is a bit of a unique application in that it is land that has been left undeveloped for quite some time despite Esperanza being developed to the north and the multifamily being developed along 150th. The subject site has been various zonings throughout the years, some office, some multifamily. What my client seeks to do is a single-family residential neighborhood. He is buying it from an individual that lives in Esperanza. So prior to filing, there was a good amount of legwork done with the various people that live in Esperanza, which, if you're aware of Esperanza, they are not afraid to protest and make their, their voice heard. Here, they were fully aware of what, what my client is doing. My client is Johnston Builders. They have a great product. So we're coming to you with, with no protest. So there is one TE that we agree to, being TE1. TE2, we cannot agree to. What they're asking us to do is take out what is specifically permitted within the code, and so we can't agree to that. The encroachments that we are proposing within the setbacks are specifically authorized under Chapter 59, Section 12250. So we, we would like to be able to utilize what the municipal code specifically authorizes as it relates to encroachments into the setbacks. So we cannot agree to TE number two.
Staff, do you have any comment on why TE2 was included or the intent of it?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I think our concern was that the setbacks are already going to only be five foot on the side, and they're going to encroach two, so that actually would be allowed. But the rear setback is proposed at 10 feet, and the encroachment requested is five. So I think our concern really lies mostly in the rear setback and whether it's okay to encroach five feet into a reduced 10-yard setback.
I don't think we'll be, I mean, we won't, obviously, there are concerns when you are encroaching into utility easements. That's, we're, all we're seeking to do is what the code allows. I made sure I, that the client, whatever the code allows is what we're seeking to do. We're not seeking to encroach in any manner not authorized specifically under the code.
Then, then, then that item, then that language wouldn't need to be in the PUD or SPUD then, if it's per code.
So can we change the TE to strike that language?
Can we just delete TE2, and we'll work with staff between now and council?
It's not a strong, it's not a strong objection. It's just that the, it just seemed like reducing the setback by half for some of these encroachments was...
So we're, we're reducing the setback from what to what?
And the lot sizes.
From 10 to five?
10 to five, but only for bay windows or fireplaces. The big ones, patios, to me.
I mean, it was just, I think, it's a reduced lot size. It's a greater lot coverage. It's a reduced setback. And that might be what's needed for this particular product, but it just was a lot, so.
And I did read the 5912250.1, and just surprising that patios are allowed to encroach.
I mean, if you're not in a UE, there really aren't those concerns. And if the city needed to get into an easement that they have, they're going to move it, and the homeowner's going to have to go and rebuild it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Box, but you said the code allows you to do what you want to do. This language of may encroach up to two feet, then you don't need that language in this?
Right. That's what I was saying. We should strike that language and let them do per code.
Well, my client couldn't make it down here today. What I'd ask is, can we, I mean, I don't know what's funny, they couldn't make it down here. If they, if we could strike that language, we'll work with staff between now and City Council.
You're saying, strike the TE. You don't want to strike your language. You want to strike the TE. If you agree to strike this, your language and said today, then you could ask the City Council to allow you to add that language back in. Work that out with them, that you would like that language added for some reason, even though I don't think it's needed.
I guess I'd ask, what, what is the purpose of the TE? If we, if we agreed to the TE...
You're not agreeing to the TE.
The TE is because the language...
What are you asking me to strike?
You say that the code allows you to do, well, you not want to do anything more than the code, then you shouldn't need your extra language here, because it seemingly then either is more than the code allows you, or it's unnecessary.
Right, because that's why the TE is there, because of that.
Yeah, the TE was just responding to the fact that you have a, you have special language that may be more than the code allows.
I mean, all we want to do is what the code allows.
Then I would propose, we strike your language, asking that you may encroach up to two feet into the side yard setback and up to five feet. And instead, if we strike that, then you can do whatever the code allows.
So strike the TE as well?
No, strike your language. Your special language in 9.14 under setback regulations?
You can strike the TE and the language.
Yeah, so we need to do both.
Yeah, if we strike your language, we'll strike the TE.
Not one or the other, is all we...
Right, right, right.
That's fine, and we'll deal with it between now and council.
Okay.
The TE is to strike the language.
Right, right, right. Well, anything else? Anybody otherwise? Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll make another motion on this one to approve, subject to TE1, striking TE2, but also striking the language under Section 9.14, the special language about the setbacks.
That's motion?
Yep.
All right. I have a motion to recommend approval of PUD 2048, City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as read in. Give our system a moment. While they do that, do I, is there a verbal second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Okay, motion by Commissioner La Forge, seconded by, if we can have that reflect, Commissioner Powers. All right. We'll let the record reflect. The motion was by La Forge, and the second was by Powers. Please cast your votes. I did not see a final. Okay. We'll take your word for it. Item is recommended for approval. All right. Item 14.
He says he didn't get the votes.
Oh, you can get a voice vote?
All votes vote? Yes.
He didn't let him hit the button. To a voice vote to make sure that reflects everybody voted for.
All right, yeah, voice vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 14.
This is case PC 10955, application to rezone 715 East Grand Boulevard and 700 Townley from R1 and AE2 to I-2 and AE2.
Once again, David Box 525 Northwest 11th. This is an application for I-2. This application is in an area that we've seen a lot recently to the south of 8th. As we go further south is the jail site. If you recall from that discussion, this is an area that is dominated with I-2 and I-3 zoning. So there are some homes located on the subject site that are on short-term leases that are set to expire. They won't be renewed, and my client owns all the land. So this is in keeping with what you'd expect in this area. If you look around, you'll see to our east, you have pretty heavy industrial with the outdoor storage of, I'm not sure what that is, but outdoor storage. And then again, to the south, kind of the same. It's a manufacturing facility to our south and east, that large building. So we believe this to be in keeping with the area and ask for your approval.
All right. This is Commissioner Pennington's Ward. Commissioner La Forge, you want to lead any of our discussion?
Nobody signed up to speak.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Any other commissioners? I'm okay. The staff recommends approval, and I don't have any issue with it. Any other commissioners?
Doesn't sound like it.
I'll recommend approval.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Ford to recommend approval, item PC 10955.
Sistine is cold.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. I did vote, but it says, it's still waiting. Oh, okay. Yeah, it says, it was approved.
So we don't, the public face doesn't see anything.
All in favor.
So, so let's do voice vote for this, too.
Hi.
Aye.
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 All right. Approved unanimously. Item 15.
This is SP 593, application for a special permit to operate a moderate-impact institutional use in the AA district at 101, 10901 North Sooner Road.
I'm Dan Andrelonis of Smith Roberts Baldishwiler, 100 Northeast 5th Street, on behalf of the applicant. This project is at the northeast corner of Sooner and Hefner Road, and the Oakdale Public Schools have operated on that campus for many, many years. The project includes a small classroom addition and some walks and canopies to facilitate movement within the campus. And then during the permit review process, it was determined that since the site is still zone AA and the proposed use falls under moderate impact, that a special-use permit would be required. As far as I know, there's been no comments from surrounding property owners, and we have members with Larson Design Group, who's who are the architectural design team, and Mr. Carl Johnson, superintendent of Oakdale Schools here, and would just be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The expansion occurs between the existing school and what is shown is that north boundary line?
I'm sorry, I say...
The expansion occurs on the north side of the existing school up to the, the white line shown on the exhibit?
Yeah, on, on the furthest building to the east up north. There's a, a small expansion to that building, to the, to the north side of that building there. And then walkways and canopies throughout the campus.
All right. This is Ward seven, so no Commissioner Pennington. Any other commissioners have comments, questions, concerns?
Nobody signed up to speak.
No one's signed up to speak.
Staff recommend approval. I'll recommend approval as well.
Have a motion from Commissioner La Forge to recommend approval of SP 593.
Give me a second. I was refreshing. There we go.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And now it displays on screen. Item passes. Thank you. Item 16.
This is SP 592, application for a special permit to operate use unit 8350.13 Scrap Operations. This is an I-3 district, and it's at 1315 East Reno Avenue.
Once again, David Box 525 Northwest 11th Street. This is a special per... Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street. This is a special permit in an area that is almost entirely zoned I3. As you're all aware, I3 is the heaviest, most intense zoning district that we have in Oklahoma City. This specific site is a bit unique in that my client is seeking to buy an operation that has been going on for approximately 80 years. With me is the seller. Her family has operated this in some form or fashion as this use for, again, about 80 years. We believe its grandfathered legally nonconforming. The issue is, with my client's acquisition of the property, the lenders will not allow us to move forward on such an acquisition without it being legal, legal via special permit. As you know, you can continue to operate a legally nonconforming use, but that doesn't give lenders any sort of comfort when they are going to be lending on an acquisition like this. So, it is a heavy use, but it's worth noting that we're surrounded on all sides by I3. And importantly, there is a rail spur that comes into this property. So, all we seek to do through this special permit is to continue the operations that have been going on, on this site for somewhere around 80 years. To that end, there are five TEs, and we cannot agree to TEs 1, 2, 3, and 4, as that's exactly what we're asking to do. So, to agree to those would render our application moot, and we could not move forward. 1 through 4 are things that simply are not tenable to us. We do agree to 5. In TE5, we think that we have appropriately restricted the site pursuant to our program description. If you read it, we limit the hours, we specify when and who and what will happen on the site. So, deleting TEs 1 through 4 will simply allow us to operate in the same manner as has been on the site for 80 years. Happy to answer any questions.
On item 4, the request that a site-proof screening shall be installed on the RTL frontage of Reno, why, why can't you agree to that?
So, if you, well, one, I'm not sure what staff has in mind with site-proof screening, but large trucks will be coming in and out of here, and if you have site-proof screening, except for your access point, you're going to have line-of-sight problems that exist along Reno Avenue. So, again, our goal here is to maintain the operations as they have been for 80 years.
Do we have the capability with a special permit, Sarah, to limit it to a term of years?
No.
It can just be revoked?
It's like a zoning case. It runs with the land.
But it can be revoked?
Yep.
If you're nonconforming?
Yeah. No to the permit, yeah.
Well, just to, while that, while they're discussing some things, I mean, the site-proof fencing has to go on the right of way. The right of way sets back off on the road, so it doesn't really inhibit sightlines and safety, because there's going to be a portion where, as they approach the edge of Reno, they're going to have clear line of sight. I don't know, for, in this corridor, with so much going on at FAM and Bricktown, if it's a requirement to have site-proof screening, I don't think we should waive that.
Well, I don't know that it's a requirement. It's a staff request. And if you, when you say all the things going on in the area, if you look at the aerial, the only thing going on in the area is heavy, heavy, heavy industrial with outdoor storage. There is scrap operation to our west as well as to the east. If you've driven this stretch of Reno, it is very heavy industrial. And although perhaps not exciting like O'Kanna and those other things, in a city like ours, it's an important piece. I'm sorry?
That's why I want to put screening on them.
Yeah, so it's an important piece to have this type of operation in close proximity to the highway network, this site, along with the sites to our west and our east, who also have no screening along the arterial, have been in operation for a very long time.
Does I3 not require screening at this point in this situation?
I believe it's the out...
The outdoor storage they're requesting in this, that ticks in the, triggers, yes.
Okay, then...
What's that? Does it require it?
The outdoor storage that they're requesting?
Which has obviously been happening for a very long time.
But that wouldn't be included in I3, right?
Right.
Okay. While Sarah's looking that up, let me, no question, that's what has been here for a long time. This is where the city evolved to have this type of operation.
Yeah.
However, with Commissioner Pennington out, he cares about this ward. It is just south of these railroad tracks, but right on the other side of those railroad tracks are some neighbors that care about this. Is there, go ahead, is there urgency to move forward on this after 80 years' worth of owning it? We suddenly need to sell it really fast during the snow and lack of neighbors that might be able to be here and the commissioner who could not attend? I would rather Commissioner Pennington be managing this one a little bit.
We did meet with Kamal, for what it's worth, and we do have urgency because of the way that the PSA is drafted and our closing date. So, there is a sense of urgency. It is worth noting, notice did get sent, not, not a single protest letter came in, to my knowledge, not a single call or email was sent to the city inquiring about this. So, fair question, but yes, there is urgency.
In, in that case, then I'll be the one to ask, since it's a special permit to operate use unit, news coverage in the last year was about neighbors to the north complaining about explosions and that loud noises and things occurring at some property. Was that at this property or not?
So, the issue that was raised is if you see Bath Avenue to our east, that operator was required through dealing with the city to go build a concrete wall due to the explosions.
But that was not from this property?
Not to my knowledge. The operator to the east, my belief, is the one that had to do the concrete wall. What my client, or what the current owner has done is, in working with the city, installed an operation, an operational check to where there are multiple points where things are expected. So, the cars are what caused the explosion. So, they have multiple points of contact now where employees are confirming that the items that would create the explosion have been removed. It's worth noting, for all of those who joined a Zoom, my client, who is the buyer, operates an identical operation on 59th Street.
Identical to what's been going on on the subject property today, or identical to the neighborhood of the east?
No, those are the same things. They're just different operators. It's a scrap operation.
Different operators.
So, my client, yeah, my client operates a facility on 59th that is directly across the street from a residential neighborhood. They've been operating since 2012 and don't have a single complaint from any neighbors.
When you say that the same uses are, so cars are being crushed or whatever on both, or they're at least allowed, okay, at both, okay. Sarah, did you have something?
Sure. Sarah Welch, Planning Department, just regarding the screening. So, your question is, would it be required? Normally, I3 to I3 would not require site-proof screening. There are provisions for the I3 district that if they would like to provide screening in the front yard, they can provide a taller fence than other districts. However, where we're getting the TE comes from the additional specific standards found on page 3 of your staff report. It's number, it's item D, and it just says that in addition to screening requirements, site-proof screening shall be erected along all arterial streets, this being an arterial street, unless it is determined by the city council that the nature of adjacent land uses makes this requirement unnecessary.
Well, it goes to city council?
Now, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe that this special permit can be used to waive any screening requirements. So, I don't think you need TE number 1. I would, I would still defend TE number 1. But, but whether or not Reno is screened per the specific use standards is something that you can send a recommendation to council about.
So, in talking to the seller, we can agree to TE4. We'd like to work with staff on what exactly that means between now and council. One of the problems with site-proof screening in a use like this, you are attracting theft and burglary and people who now feel safe behind a site-proof fence to go steal the metal. So, that oftentimes is one of the reasons you don't have these walled off. You're inviting an element into your facility that now is safe from public view.
I could be convinced of that, fellow commissioners. This, I said I could. This area has, whoever decided to put FAM near this area decided to put it after this area developed. Whoever wants to build a hotel or a water park or whatever, this has been scrapyard area forever. So, I can be convinced of that and a lot of this. I'm trying, the neighbors to the north is what I'm a little more concerned about, but they also probably came later than this, so...
And that's a fair point. If you look at the neighbors to the north, unlike the one on 59th here, between our site and them is a massive concrete batch plant, a massive railyard, additional industrial development, and then it's 4th Street.
Yeah, it's really all the way up to 4th Street, so, okay.
David, good question for you. You mentioned the operational, you said that you worked with the city, or the applicant worked with the city at some point to develop some operational standards to prevent explosions? Is that right?
Yeah, we can share with you what we've, what those look like.
Are those in the program description?
No.
I'm just wondering if, can we put those, okay. I'm just wondering if those have the force of law. Apparently, there were some, I don't know when that happened, that you worked with the city or the...
Well, the one to the east was the bigger problem, and I, I don't know if it was a requirement that avoided some sort of litigation, but the, the entity to the east was required to build a concrete wall because they couldn't figure it out.
Yeah, well, that, just for the commission's benefit, that's what we're trying to, what staff is trying to do here is, we know that there's been a lot of problems with the east. The concrete wall was built, hasn't been all that effective. The neighbors have been complaining for years and years about these explosions. They seem to be similar operations, yet I don't know that, like David said, I, I don't know that we had had as much problems from this side, if, if any explosions. So, I don't know what the difference is in their operations, why there are explosions coming from the east and not so much or not any from this one. Maybe, so our thinking was, well, maybe they are not crushing cars in the same way, or they have a better procedure.
One's doing it right, and one's doing it not right.
I think it's that. I think it's the procedure checkpoints that exist.
Somebody's not taking gas or fluid, you know?
That's always been my simple thought.
Compressed gas or gas alone or whatever. They're not emptying it before. That should be the first thing you do.
Yes, but yet the city has been working with Derishburg, or however you say it, on the east, on that very thing. Like, why can't we get somebody to pull out these natural gas canisters so explosions can happen?
Before they blow up, yeah.
You know, they, they would have done that presumably before building an incredibly expensive concrete wall. They would have done everything within their power operationally to prevent that, but yet it was still happening. So, that's been kind of our concern, and hence these TEs, just trying to come up with something that will prevent that, whether, you know, and we don't know to what extent these, this operation might expand in the future, so that was a concern as well.
No, go ahead.
Real quick, I'm just, I kind of took a deep dive into this. This is not, I mean, not needing explanation. This is for the other commissioners. Oklahoma City did a bunch of research into what was allowed and when and how long ago, but no matter what, this is an expansion of that. This is all the way fur, all the way to the back. So, I believe the footprint is growing. I believe that the site-proof screening isn't a big ask, you know, even if it's the same, same, not a change of use, the same use on the, on the facility that's been in existence longer than any of us have been around. I understand large semi-access. I, I, I don't even think it'd be a problem to call it site-proof screening with a, with a chain-link gate allowed, you know? So, the center of it would be open and a gate would slide open. But to get some kind of site-proof screening along Reno and the arterial street and make sure that the whole, the TE number 1, I don't really understand. If we require site-proof screening as well as, then we would keep number 1 and number 4.
So, we can't agree to TE1?
Because it would require new screening around the other perimeter?
Yeah, and you don't need to screen I3 to I3. You don't need to screen I3 to...
Well, that's where I disagree, because I believe it's, should be required just because of the special permit and the outdoor stor, the type of stuff that's there.
But, but you screen, they're two separate things. The frontage is one thing, and we can talk about that. But screen, I mean, just look at the, look at the inner part of the C, right? The part that we're not acquiring. Why would you want to screen the outdoor storage to the outdoor storage? I3 to I3 doesn't need screening. I understand the concern, and we can talk through that on Reno, but screening the rest of it from other heavy industrial outdoor storage uses doesn't make sense.
Well, what I've learned being here is that inside of that C that also doesn't have outdoor perimeter screening, it could go to change hands and come back across the commission and have to be zoned correctly or, or permitted correctly.
Well, it is. So, that one is, is I3, and it has a special permit to allow...
Outdoor storage.
Outdoor storage, scrap operation. Well, outdoor storage is just allowed in I3. The special permit is only necessary for the scrap operations. And so, I3, to my knowledge, would not require screening to adjacent I3. Now, what the seller has said is, we can agree to TE4. We'd like to visit with staff about our concerns as we go to council and what, what that really means to screen Reno, but we cannot agree to screen I3 to I3.
Well, the last part of my comment, where I was getting to, is I'd love to have screening where you didn't see it along Reno, but also, and she's the, she's the existing owner. So, there has been fire department responses there with fires over the years, previously, correct?
Right.
Okay, and that screening along the arterial would block access to some of that, and so that's of a concern. I just wanted to bring up. So, I'm on the fence.
You're on the fence.
Yes, I'm on the literal fence.
But wouldn't, wouldn't any gate have a Knox box?
Right, that's where I was going. If there was arterial screening and it was ever to be gated, it would need a TE that, you know, it would, it would have to have a Knox box access, large enough for apparatus.
I just, I think it needs to be screened on Reno. I mean, I've actually been to the facility, used it before.
You say you do or don't?
I do. It was an interesting experience, but I, I just think that leaving it open, the frontage, I don't think we can do that. I don't think that makes sense when you have this opportunity to kind of clean up the look of the street.
What do you guys think about, they've offered to agree to the TE. They're just going to work with city council between now and then. I think they're agreeing to 4.
Yeah, that's what I gather.
I'm good with that.
I, I think I would like, also, if it's possible, for the mitigating procedures that you're talking about that have been applied elsewhere. There, there's not the kind of, you know, things blowing up now on this site. I would prefer that that not happen in the future. I think the only way we can make that happen is if we include that program description. I, you know, if there's some other thing that would accomplish that, I'd be open to it, but as part of your program description for there to be those, those safeguards or processes in place.
Yeah, what I'd ask is if you would grant us the ability to work with staff between now and council. My client wasn't able to come in. I don't want to commit them to different operational requirements that they can't do, but we will work with staff between now and council on that. We can agree to the TE4, subject, again, to making sure we understand what site-proof means and it's safe for our operation as well as what staff wants.
Is there not already a fence there?
There is.
It's not site-proof.
It's fully fenced and gated.
But it could be made site-proof just with vinyl inserts and...
Right, it's not a big deal.
Again, the same issue. Site-proof is potentially an unsafe condition. So, we're happy to agree to TE4 with this caveat that we're going to try to work with staff on what that really means prior to city council.
It'll look better than one of the crap that it looks like now. I mean, I would go for, if the other one across the street was asking, I'd ask them to do site-proof too.
The one issue that, that she brought up, that most of the, the outdoor storage is to the rear. The front is more of a retail-facing piece with buildings and parking lots. So, I, I don't know the extent of what we would need to do, but you can see that there are three buildings that front Reno. We obviously don't want to put a big fence in front of the buildings. So, to the extent that we have site-proof screening along Reno, we'd want to understand where exactly they would want, because the public can come and park at those buildings.
Well, and I think just for your sightline issue, it would be better if it were back.
Well, then do we limit any of these activities from the first 100 feet, 150 feet from Reno? Limit that to basically the, the L shape? I don't know what that distance is, but...
I don't know what that distance is, but that's a thought.
Well, I mean, maybe we just agree that we'll get with staff and between my client and staff, try to come up with a workable solution as to what is needed as to site proof screening along Reno.
I don't understand that comment because we deal with site, what site proof screening is all the time and there's this standard language they put in. It can be a stockade.
But where?
Where there's existing fencing for now would be.
He's saying where in the frontage, where in relation to.
I mean, if you look at the frontage of Reno, there's a very small piece that is a parking lot.
To the west, it's the worst part.
We're looking at it right now and you got the two.
If it's the existing use, anything on the west side, it'd be nice to be covered up.
Between the E and the left side of the A appears to be the only place that logically you would put screening.
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me.
So the site proof screening means to screen the buildings. Well, that's, that's going to create circulation problems and other type of issues.
Six foot's not going to screen that whole building though.
Yeah, elevation's up higher.
Does the city of Oklahoma City police bring stolen cars to this location?
I have no idea.
Catalytic converters, yeah.
I thought I picked a stolen car up there one time.
That she, they don't, they don't buy stolen cars.
You don't? I don't know, none of those. Well, I've been there a lot.
Here's, I'm on street view right now. I can sit there at the driveway and look and I can see.
Dumpsters.
I can see a dump truck. I can see equipment, piles of scrap, whatever, between the buildings. So that would be my concern is how do we address?
Yeah, and again, we'll agree to the TE four, just subject to, we want to understand from staff what it is we're screening. We can't go screen the buildings.
No.
I understand your concern and what you're trying to, to screen from you.
I still think fellow commissioners, he's agreeing to our most restrictive TE that is, requires site proof screening.
Okay. On the frontage.
Along the arterial, right? I mean, what is it? Along the arterial frontage.
So this is what I heard. I heard yes to TE four, yes to TE five, and did you want a TE six that the applicant will work with staff to include mitigation measures before this goes.
Operational measures related to, yeah.
Okay, before this goes to council.
Did we, we were okay, even though the staff recommended TE's one, two, three? Does anybody have concerns with dropping one, two, and three?
I don't.
No.
Sarah, just Sarah's concern that we're not sure that, correct me if I'm misstating this, Sarah, but we're not sure that that can actually be done with an SP to remove something that's required.
What do we think is required that we're removing?
Okay, Sarah Welch, planning department. Okay, so when, when I, when TE five is agreed to, it means that the conditions of the program will be included in the ordinance. So it'll be, this special permit will be adopted per ordinance, subject to this program description. In the program description, it just reads, no, there, the existing structure shall remain as well as the existing screening to enclose the property. No other screening shall be necessary, given the nature of the area. And we're just asking to delete that from the program description because we don't, we don't think a special permit can waive any screening requirements. Are there screening requirements, I three to I three? No. Are there screening requirements per a special permit? Yes. It's a chain link fence around the perimeter of the site and then screening along the arterial unless you waive it. So we don't want the permit, the, the program description to, to me, that's a variance. Later on, if there was some sort of screening requirement, a different use of the, whatever, we just don't think that a special permit, and I don't want us to get in the habit of thinking a special permit can waive any code condition.
Well, and it sounds to me like TE, like by deleting TE one, it would be in conflict with TE four.
Maybe. And so on TE one, Sarah, is it really that full sentence that we want to delete? No other screening shall be necessary, given the nature of the area? That, the full sentence is what's potentially problematic, right? It's granting them some, waiving any future obligation that they would have to provide other screening.
We can delete the no other screening shall be necessary, given the nature of the use.
That's what I was thinking. I don't get the, I don't get how you remove a part of a sentence, which was the beginning of TE one, the dot, dot, dot.
It would just say the existing structure shall remain, period. The following conditions shall also be included in the application and then, and then whatever conditions are agreed upon.
Which one is, which is it? I've, is it Roman four? Where is this?
On the, on the specific use standards. It's under, so it starts on page three. I think that's what you mean.
Yeah.
And then these are the, for this use, you have to be at least two acres. They do. They're only allowed, they can only apply for this if your site is zoned I three. They are. A chain link fence or wall not less than eight feet shall be provided around the use, and they are. The whole existing site is fenced with chain link. They meet that. D is the one about screening along Reno unless it's waived by the city council. And then the third one is just, or the, or item E is just about hard surface paving.
Sorry, where in the program description is the language in TE one referenced?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to see it with my own eyes.
Middle paragraph.
The middle paragraph where?
If you look at, do you have a copy of the program description?
This one, okay.
So it's, it starts with the, so what, what we need to do is just take out the sentence that says, no other screening shall be necessary, given the nature of the area. Because what that leaves us is the existing screening shall remain, existing structure shall remain as well as the existing screening to enclose the property.
So what's wrong with the existing screening remaining?
There is. The fence is fully fenced.
We're, we're concerned that in the future, we're concerned in the future that.
That's fence, not screening.
We don't think that a, and I'll, I'll look to our municipal counselor because maybe I'm overreacting or overthinking, but I just do not believe that a special permit can waive any future requirements. That would be a variance process. You can apply additional conditions with a special permit, but you can't remove requirements, so.
And I think by taking out the sentence that starts with no, we get there.
That's good, taking that sentence out, but why not the portion of as well as existing screening? Why can the existing screening not remain?
We want it to remain.
Okay, so, so why, oh wait, I see what you're saying. We don't want to, we don't want to delete that. We don't want to delete that. You're right, you're right.
And then become site proof on the arterial.
I think you're handling TE.
Which is what I three would require anyway, so.
Existing structure shall remain as well as existing screening to enclose the property. I think TE one, we should only be asking to remove the sentence that the applicant is agreeing to.
I agree. You would mod.
There we go. So it's, so we're going to change TE one to be, amend the program description to remove no other screening shall be necessary, given the nature of the area. That.
Yes, sir, you're right.
There it is.
And then no to TE two and three.
One, four, and five, okay.
And then four, subject to our conversation with staff, and then five.
I'm, I'm okay with two and three, guys. Back to my thing about this is what it's been for, this is how nobody evolved.
You're okay deleting two.
Okay, deleting two and three. I think we're getting there even without Commissioner Pennington, but it's not my word either, you guys.
No, I think we can make it a little bit better, but we're not going to.
Everybody's good with that?
Polish this one. Not fully anyways.
I think I'm ready to make a motion. I don't think the applicant will have a problem with or the commissioners, so make a motion to recommend approval of the item, subject to deleting TE's two and three and amending TE one to be that we would amend the program's description to remove no other screening shall be necessary, given the nature of the area.
Subject to, and then also technical evaluation for.
Yeah, and still subject to four and five, yeah. I said deleting two and three, keeping four and five. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, and adding TE six, that operational.
Work with staff to mitigate operational measures.
Yes, to be added to the program description, right? Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner La Forge to approve this, recommend approval of special permit five nine two, subject to the technical evaluations as amended. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your vote. And that is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Item seventeen was continued, item eighteen was continued, and item nineteen is continued. That brings us to item twenty.
Item twenty is the introduction of the draft Vision Zero Action Plan, Oklahoma City's first traffic safety plan. And we have a presentation prepared for that, for the commission. We, the consultant didn't feel it was safe to travel here from Fort Worth, so Justin Henry, our transportation program planner, is going to present the material to us. This is the introduction. We will put it on the planning commission. The plan is put on the agenda for next time for adoption. So also Maxton Harris is here from our transportation planning section. Many others have worked on this and we appreciate the planning commissioners who have worked on this as well, but we'll have Justin take it away.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, Justin Henry of the planning department. As Jeff said, I'm a transportation planner, as Maxton Harris with me today. Sasha McCrone is also part of our team, also helped on this plan. We've been working with Kim Lee Horn, who's been helping prepare us for this, but the team we're working with is based out of Dallas, Fort Worth, and they didn't feel comfortable coming up today. So I'll do my best to cover for them. The Vision Zero Plan kind of originated in a Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant that we won in the end of 2023, and so that we've been working last year to prepare this plan. We've been working with an advisory board that's been overseeing the, the plan being put together, including members of the public commissioner here, including Commissioners Powers, Macon Clare, some city council members, some members of the Traffic and Transportation Commission, representatives from the Police Department, Public Works Department as well, and then other important stakeholders out in the community. And so over the past nine months or so, we've been, we've been working up towards this stage. Today is just an introduction of the plan. I'll be coming back to the next planning commission for your consideration for adoption. So just walking you through the plan a little bit, it's kind of divided into three parts here. Part one is really kind of just defining the purpose and the process, how we've kind of gone about writing this plan. Part two is really getting more into defining what the issues are that are leading to a lot of traffic fatalities. The Vision Zero Plan is about reducing traffic fatalities on our streets. And then the third section is about infrastructure and policy solutions, really trying to get at the nature of this issue. All right, so starting on in part one, we've got two chapters here, creating a vision and engaging the community. I should note too, that this public draft has now been out for about six weeks or so, for, just for public comment. We've gotten about eighty five comments in so far, and we've also got additional staff comments in from other departments that we're kind of working in. So the version you'll probably see next, next planning commission will be slightly different as we work in some of our feedback. All right, Vision Zero. Vision Zero is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. You can see here some of the tenants that were established by that advisory board in writing the plan. We really tried to write a, a set of policies and infrastructure recommendations that meet these criteria as we move forward. The board also helped us craft a mission statement for the plan. The city of Oklahoma City aims to eliminate road fatalities through strategic infrastructure enhancements, policy advocacy, and inclusive education. The city is dedicated to protecting all road users and promoting sustainable, vibrant community. I felt like I should pause here at a moment because a lot of our initial reaction, a lot of times when we talk about eliminating traffic fatalities is, is that even possible? And it's a good question. We're not sure if we can get to zero. There's a handful of communities out in the United States and the world that have gone to zero, but it's a very small number of the amount of people who've actually taken on this kind of plan. We're one of the last large cities to do one of these plans, so we're, we're a little bit behind in that. Something I feel like we should note is, and something the advisory board told us, was that there really is no good goal other than zero. We don't want to set a goal to have twenty traffic fatalities, to have fifty traffic fatalities. We don't want a goal of zero, and we want to try to push towards that. If we're not successful in getting to zero, but we eliminate a large percent of our traffic fatalities along the way, we feel like that's a, a milestone that's really important and still very constructive. I talked a little bit about the timeline. We've gone very fast on this plan just because of kind of the nature of our grant that we won and the fact that there's opportunity for capital implementation grants. So there's another cycle opening up early this year where we'll be able to apply for federal funding to help implement a lot of the recommendations here. And so we started in February with a big safety launch. It was a kind of a large event at the downtown library. We've had advisory board meetings and public engagement kind of throughout the process, and then now we've kind of gotten to this, this draft stage. Speaking of our public engagement, we had a fairly robust public engagement process on this one, especially considering that, the tight timeframe. We did both an online and in-person engagement strategy. We had six pop-up events that we attended over the course of the year. We had six public workshops kind of scattered throughout the city, trying to get close to where we knew some of the issues were and what the data was telling us. And now we're going to have public hearings in planning commission, traffic commission, and city council. On the online engagement as well, I just note that we had over eighteen hundred contributions. We had this, this PIN map survey where people could drop a PIN on any spot in the city zooming in and give us some detailed feedback about what problems they were seeing. This worked really well for us because we had a lot of data from the state highway safety office and the police department about where traffic fatalities were occurring and serious injuries, but a lot of this helped provide context to some of those. So people were able to report back like, you know, we think that there's a visibility issue because the weeds have grown up too high, maybe code enforcement should look at that, or, you know, there's really just, there should be a signalized intersection at this spot because when traffic gets congested, people can't turn out safely. A lot of good feedback like that that helps inform us. All right, and then going into understanding the problem, this is kind of more the prescriptive part of the plan. First, talk about the crash analysis. So one of the interesting things that happened in the data that kind of led us to apply for this grant and to do this process was that we were seeing our traffic collisions trend down, especially kind of peaked around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, but our fatalities were going up. And so that's a, that's an odd combination to see your crashes, you know, and we were looking into data, we were seeing a lot more of them were happening at night than during the day, and trying to drill into the information and really figure out what was happening here. This process has been pretty interesting to find out what some of the root causes might be. I'll kind of go into that next. So from that crash data and a lot of the feedback, we, we developed these crash profiles. These are kind of the conditions that we found contributed to a lot of the serious injury and fatal accidents. And then in the plan, you'll see how different combinations of these, like if it's a highly, high-speed street that's close to a school, you might see a higher accident rate than would be expected, given how much of that is in the street, for instance. Other things that popped out that were particularly important is a lot of disadvantaged census tracts had a lot higher rates of traffic fatalities, which is something we've kind of dived into in the plan. Proximity to railroads, we've seen instances where people, cars are stopping around railroads or there's, there's congestion issues that are causing problems. And street lighting is another one that's really floated up through this analysis and shown us that a lot of streets that have been built that don't have proper street lighting, you're seeing a lot more serious accidents at their, serious collisions at their intersections. Go ahead. From all this analysis, we generated a high injury network, which is kind of the Vision Zero standard term. It's only six point six percent of our road network. You can kind of see, it's a lot of red lines, but that's only six percent of our streets, but they represent fifty-eight percent of all of our injury crashes and eighty-seven percent of all of our fatal crashes. So they really informed us that these are the areas to kind of concentrate on doing a lot of the safety investments first. And then we identified seven specific study corridors where we went kind of the next level of depth and actually went through process with engineers and helped design out a lot of possible solutions. Part three on the designing the solutions and getting to zero, again, the more prescriptive part. Here we kind of analyze a lot of potential traffic safety countermeasures. These are the interventions and changes we can make to streets to make them safer. Things like medians and pedestrian refuge to make crossings safer in areas where we've seen pedestrian accidents, hybrid beacons, roundabouts, more explanation about where they should be applied and where they shouldn't. And we're, we're still fine tuning it just a little bit with some of our public works engineers input as well, but there's a lot of countermeasures that kind of goes through. And the federal highway administration now puts out a lot of data about what our expected crash reduction factors will be as we implement a lot of those changes. So that has helped inform the plan as well. It also has, the plan also contains a policy section where we tackle these kind of five pillars of safer people, safer roads, safer speeds, safer vehicles, and post-crash care. These kind of together help our, our goal to help us reach a lower fatality rate, working our way towards zero. We know that a lot of the interventions listed here might have small effects in and of themselves, but the idea is of layering together improvements in a lot of these areas is the real path to, to make big reductions. All right, and then we also are putting out a high injury, or a high injury network and interactive crash dashboard on our website where you will be able to go in, you'll be able to look and see where the crashes are occurring. able to look and see where the crashes are occurring, or track our progress over time. Click on the actual individual crashes and find out more information about what's been happening there. So our next steps, giving the, putting the draft out today for your feedback, coming back to you again at the next planning commission, going to traffic commission, and we'll also go through a city council process, and then hopefully applying for federal grants and other funding opportunities around March, April, May, to help fund a lot of the improvements recommended here. So, and happy to take any questions you might have.
Justin, thank you for your stand-in presentation. Great job. Any questions, comments from commissioners?
Well, comments, I guess. This has been really an interesting process to be involved in, something that I have zero experience with or expertise in. But just to kind of observe what seemed to me like a stellar example of engineering meets common sense. I mean, they're the very practical, nuts-and-bolts approach to identifying issues and the problem points, and the really wide range of possible solutions. It's just been very interesting to me. I'm not sure I contributed as much as maybe somebody else could have or would have that had more expertise, but it's been very, very interesting. And I learned something on, at our very first meeting, that I have, you know, taken to heart, which is that the idea that there are some things that you just can't change is just not accurate. It's, you know, at a minimum, you can engineer around them. So I have really enjoyed being part of this process, and I think it is worthwhile. It is a goal that I think that we should strive toward, certainly as we are looking at, you know, how this relates to our ongoing planning process with both new areas of the city that are developing, and also in an effort to bring more density to areas of the city that already have, you know, hardscape. I think it's just been very, very helpful.
Yeah, I think the consultant did a good job facilitating the advisory board meetings. I enjoyed the process. Completely agree with what Justin said earlier, is that Oklahoma City's 15, I mean, we're one of the last one, big cities to do this. We're behind 15 or 20 years. You know, as a, you know, all of us are very car-centric. I think I just, when I look at other cities, I think there's just lots of room for improvement here. We've got a lot of active districts up and coming, and we need, and, you know, with pedestrians active through all of those. And so we need to have something in place that protects the public, allows people to get around more easily, more safely. And so I'm really, I'm really excited to see this be implemented and evolve. I mean, it's not a, you know, implement and done. It's going to evolve, you know, as it ages. So thank you to staff for all your work on this. Thank you for the commissioners that participated in the advisory board. I would ask that the planning commissioners be acknowledged with everyone else in the acknowledgement section of the plan.
Yeah, I noticed they left our names off of it.
You caused too much trouble.
Yeah, that's it.
Not on purpose.
Thanks to the other commissioners. And Justin, good job. If you weren't intending to be the one to give the presentation, great work. Gentlemen, that was great.
I just, real quick, want to mention, so we, like Justin said, we'll be going, we'll be seeking capital grants, which is one of the reasons why this is on kind of a tight schedule. But just, one of the things that I noticed that's in the plan is it talks about how as you add bike and pedestrian infrastructure, even though you're getting more people on the streets, because, I mean, frankly, I was a little worried about that. You know, as time goes on, we're getting more people walking and biking, which is a good thing, but they're also more vulnerable people to automobile accidents and collisions. But the research shows that that actually, even though you're getting a lot more people on the streets, riding bikes, walking, total accidents still go down. And in fact, Justin mentioned, there are just a couple cities that have achieved zero. One of them was, I think it's Jersey City, or am I...
Hoboken.
There's Hoboken, but there's another one, I think, Jersey City. But these are, these are areas that are very walkable. The city streets are the most, but it's different than ours. They have a lot of walkers and bikers. People tend to go slower. And so reducing speed, having, you know, more mixed uses, a lot of these things are what our conference and plan calls for. Of course, we're a totally different city, but to the extent we can grow towards that, we'll be in good shape. But the bottom line is, it is a fact that as you add these bike lanes, they are traffic calming, as you add, as you start to see more people walking and biking, as long as we do it right, I mean, there's, like was mentioned, there's a design element here. You've got to have it designed well. We can make sure that it's safe. So also, good news is, even though we're late to the game, we have been doing a lot of the things that are in here, but there are a lot that we're new to. So we're looking forward to doing a lot of these things, and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
We may be late to the game. We're late to the game with the other things, too. I mean, the sidewalks, and even the pedestrian, and the bike walk OKC, I mean, all of it seems to be coming together at a good time. You know, we don't have a bunch of infrastructure in place that we've already decided we want it like this. You know, we're still at a place where we can be subject to this input, you know. And I also thought that it was very helpful that the approach of our consultants was to really kind of meet people where they are. You know, there's not a, there's not a lot of, you know, one size fits all here. It's very adaptive, so.
The public works and police have been phenomenal partners, great to work with. They're excited about implementing these. We're excited about implementing it, not just through capital grants, but through our bond project, our bond program, which, again, speaking of timing, that's another reason why we were trying to get this done, so it could be enacted or implemented through the bond program.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. So wrapping up communications and reports, planning commission committees. Don't think anyone, we have anything to report. Planning commission members. Commissioner Powers.
I don't see a...
No.
Commissioner Meek. Commissioner Privet. Commissioner Newman. Commissioner La Forge. I don't have anything. Planning Department.
Nothing to make?
I do have a question for the study session next time. Is about the parking ordinance. So that's as part of the code update. It's kind of a following on from our last one, which was about urban heat. So we'll be, and you may ask yourself, what's the relationship there? And we're going to tell you. So, but it is really kind of preparing, laying the groundwork for an upcoming update to our parking code.
Is that it? Municipal councillor's office? Nothing. Citizens to be heard? See none? All right, everyone, drive safe. We are adjourned.